Okay, we will call this evening's meeting to order. Please let our minutes show that all of council is in attendance with the exception of Councilor Smith and Councilor Walton. We also have members of staff and members of the public. And our auditor is here as well, so we will get going and have some presentations for this evening. So our next item would be approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
We can second to approve the agenda for this evening. Any question? If you want to make note that I'm going to change the order of some of the reports a little bit. So after we have a first presentation, we'll move into our financial audit presentation before the council report. So is Councilor's okay with that?
I don't know if it's going early.
Yeah, so that's good with everyone. All those in favor, raise your hand. Your motion is carried. Item four is approval of the minutes of our prior meetings, so there are two there.
Do they have a motion to approve the point forty five committee of the meeting we had presented? Seconded.
We can second to approve those minutes, any questions? During now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
I move the approval of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting minutes as presented. Seconded.
We can second to approve the minutes from May thirteenth. Any question? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Any declaration of conflict of interest to the CV? Okay, hearing now, we will move on to item six, which is a presentation by Doris Kennedy regarding the Harbor Bridge height variation.
Thank you for joining us this evening, thanks for having me. Well. I don't know much that you discussed at the last meeting. I did have a handout for you, I believe, yeah, like that. Crates came to the committee. There was so much talk about the beans that they have offered to pay for this, to have something to make it a little bit more attractive and match it and do something that everybody is satisfied with. So the front picture is the initial print up first and what this is, I hope that you looked at it closely. It's a nineteen oh one projection of our history of the bridge in our community. So in the middle, it says nineteen oh one, making of the bridge or when the opening. Above it is how truss span. And on the left-hand side represents Summerville and surrounding areas. And it's kind of like farmers, there's a farmer hat, there's a long gown for dress, children, a wagon with potatoes farming. And then the two trees on the side is for timber. On the other side is the town side. And so the first man that you see as walking towards that span has a railroad cap. But the rest of them is really basically representing the town, meaning the town and the communities on the other side of the river come together to build the bridge. The nineteen oh one is open so that it's kind of running like the river going underneath the bridge just to demonstrate the water. Again, on the right-hand side, that heartland side is a man with a wheelbarrow and salmon fisherman. And again lumber, the two trees meaning lumber. So kind of depicts pictorial picture of the community around the turn of the century. It can be done, he told me that he can do collar men, I believe he put it on here. Character size would be nine point five inches. The total height would be three point eight feet. And the beam width is two point eight feet. And the width across the beam on the back, the beam is actually, he said, twenty nine foot twenty one feet. And they cannot do anything longer than twenty feet. The beams or the arch itself could be, but they would have to they would have to weld it and had another piece. So they didn't really want to do that. They can do this, this way and cut it all out. And he said they will center it and make it as long as twenty feet. Now, the beam on this side and the beam on the other side, I believe are different sizes. And they will make it, you know, cosmetic so it looks nice. We did talk about possibly doing the nineteen oh one on this side, the heartland side, we'll do nineteen twenty two with the cover. But we thought it might confuse tourists. So we didn't want to do that, so we thought best to do both, have the same on both ends. So what they would do is they will do it all up, they will paint it, they will have it ready. But they cannot, they're not licensed to remove it from crates to be installed. So it would have to either be the D I T or you guys. They do all the welding, there's no welding to be done. They, I don't know if you saw the brackets. Some of these sheets.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, you did? Okay, so the brackets actually goes, the I beam goes between the bracket and it's solid, really solid. So it will be all welded and they just have to tighten up, make sure it really tight. But he wanted to make sure that you knew how solid it was and it's engineer approved. And he thought the D I T would have questions about how solid it was. And he said, you know, that's why they went like this. It'll be all welded. And he said, he has it on one of these big machines, the same plate. And he said it goes in the woods and it's been on there for years and it's never moved. So he's pretty sure it's secure for that. So really, that's, I guess, what I need to do from you guys is to know this is something that you can take to D I T and approve.
D T I will not install. I've already reached out to D T I and they don't have an issue with the design, but they do require stamped engineered stamped drawings. And it's up to us to have it installed.
Okay, well, I can get that. So it's up to you guys.
Again, can handle installation.
They said it's three hundred and fifty pounds and they thought two people could do it. So. Is there any questions of that?
Signifies a license to install it.
Wow. They have to have a license in order to remove it from their, what they manufacture in order to take it and place it and install it, they don't have that license.
That misproves me too. I mean, the town, the town doesn't have a license to do any of this, but we can pick it up and install it. It's okay.
That's all I know.
I think passing the O S on us to the fall.
Yeah.
So we're liable.
Yes.
What time is it, I miss the door, so please just let them solve.
They can't install it. They do not have the license to bring it down and install it. They don't have it already.
You said bring it down, the bringing down the part, so.
Yeah.
When is it going to be available?
When you guys say yes, they'll get worried on it, it's all, the prints are already made, it'll take three to four weeks.
Did we ask D T I if we could install it or they're okay with that?
Yeah, it's up to us. However, it gets installed, they're just not taking this.
Talk if we have.
No, and they were going to check to see, Jesse wasn't sure if we needed a highway permit where we're adding it. And he was supposed to let me know, but it's not an issue, it's just.
It depends as where they want to sell them on.
Be painted.
Yeah, they painted black.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of setting one place and bolting it with some zingable lifts and. Which we all have a similar.
And if D T I has any qualifications that we need to meet for the installer. I mean, that's a conversation for them.
They basically want you to have a stamp plan and just to know.
And it was something. On the front end side, we don't worry about traffic.
No, 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 one obstacle.
So we don't need flag?
No. Some cones should suffice.
The person that has been working with me is Mark Wong. So he would be, you know, I can't answer your engineer things, but he rallies off to me and I, yeah.
Mark and connect them.
Yeah, let Mark and Craig maybe have a conversation about the certification part of the build.
Yeah.
And then once it's built, I see no reason why they're going to.
On the lighter side, I'd just like to see when the Lotto is going to start, the first Quebec vehicle that goes through there with an air conditioner on the top.
The other thing that he said we could do is if you want to put any hooks or anything like, you know how in two thousand and eighteen we had. Look, we had a big banner and it was, we put it up from like post to light post, but it kind of sagged. And he said if we wanted to do little tiny hooks, they'll weld them in too. If it was wanted. I'm just saying, yeah, like for a banner, I'm just thinking ahead that we might want to have some stuff like that on it.
And they covered it.
No, I think she means along the bar.
Underneath, because we literally could banner up if the bridge was closed. So it wouldn't be vehicles.
I see.
So that would be something we might want.
That would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I'm just putting that out there because if you can think of any other things that we might want to put on that, if the bridge is closed, this would be the time to do it. Because they are. The bridge closed, yeah. So is that right?
So how long, do you think, three weeks?
Three, four days. It's all ready to go, they're just waiting for you guys.
I'm honored that they.
I'm very happy, like to say we're bored about this, like.
Very generous offer.
Very just.
So, yeah, so pleased that they contacted us.
Yeah.
Thank you for taking the lead on that and thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you. I have one more thing. Just up be very quick.
Where is it on here?
It's not, these flyers, they have a map of Hartland in it. I have just finished the manuscript for the salmon pool, Hartland Salmon Pool. It's being edited. I want to put a map of Hartland with the salmon pool in the island and yours in the middle of this is very, it's just what I need. Just to put it in front of the book so it's people can reference it, they're reading book. I don't know if I, can I get permission, is there a copyright?
I think there's a copyright because we looked at getting more of them and it was very expensive and so that's why I think it's definitely a copyright. But people look into it.
I just, you know, if there's a copyright and whatever the company is, I would like to talk to them. So that's all I want.
That's great, thank you so much for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doris.
So you'll get back to me, yes or no, will you directly contact Mark?
I'll reach out to Mark just to let him know what D T I said because he probably means more to him maybe than I, but and I'll C C you in anything in that.
Okay, thank you.
And so now we'll have our little switcheroo, we'll have Mark first to come. And present our signing for audit results for twenty twenty four, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. So I passed. So I passed everyone out a copy of the audited consolidated financial statements. And hopefully you guys are all know a little bit about what an audit is. Or the financial background. So our audit opinion, which is all of the audited report is a clean unqualified opinion, which is your desired audit results. Essentially, it means we were unable or we were able to complete our engagement while identifying those significant issues. Julie and Tina and I have already met, we've kind of reviewed a little bit of, we reviewed the information over. And the total audit is thirty two pages long, although we're not going to go through all thirty two pages. A lot of it is just backup information for you to review if you want to in detail. And feel free to ask any questions as we move along. So the first page we can go to is page seven. This is your statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So as you can see, for twenty twenty four, there's a surplus of four million. And a lot of that is due to recognizing the revenues from the complex. Now, there is also the cost of the complex, which has been capitalized. And that is on your statement of financial position, not as an expense. So the total revenues were eight point nine nine, which is down from the year before. But a lot of that is due to the complex having more revenue than prior year. Expenses are up this year. And a lot of that also is due to recreational culture, which is related to complex. Is it okay? All right. So overall, it's a favorable financial results again by the town, last year's also favorable. Now we can move to our statement of financial position, which is on page five. And this shows financial assets. So our financial assets are one point eight million. So financial assets are cash or assets that will become cash in the future. Your financial liabilities would be anything that the town owes in debt or current payables. So overall, the assets less your liabilities gives you net debt of two point three million. And as you can see, that increased from the previous year. And if you turn to page six, it shows how your surplus of four point four million. You subtract off your acquisition of tangible capital assets, your amortization, which is a non-cash expense, proceeds on any assets that were sold. And then the net disposal of a capital asset, which was, majority of that was land sale. And then we add the difference in the prepaid and we get your decrease in that financial assets of one point nine. And then your net debt at the beginning of the year gets you to your net debt at the end of the year for two point three million. Any questions yet?
Just wanted to ask, like, if you have any significant events that you guys found in income related that led to the cash.
The decrease in cash balance?
Is that all regarding the complex or is there other?
Go to page eight, except here, financials. And that shows how your surplus of four point four million, you add back your amortization, which is non-cash. You add back your loss on sale of assets. And then you have your change in like receivables.
Yep.
Payables, deferred revenue, and you get down to the three point eights. And a lot, and then you have your acquisition of assets, which is six point eight. And then some of that was financed that was paid out. And then you have the amount of one point eight million. So your overall cash decreases to one point two. Your beginning cash was two point four, it's usually one point two ending cash at the end of the year. So that page depicts your cash flow of how the beginning of the year and all the events that took place during the end of the year. So majority of the deferred revenue was all complex related fundraising and other revenues that we have completely recognized now that the complex is open, it's available for use. Any other questions yet? So overall, the town, as you can see on statements cashless, had invested six point eight nine in capital assets. But all of that was done before twenty twenty four because it was considered an asset in progress, it wasn't available use, but they were still spending money on building the complex. So overall, the other investments were roadwork, port empties purchased, equipment and furnishings for the complex. And there's a storage container. And a page that you will all want to know about will be page twenty five. Which is your reconciliation from P S A to the software or surplus deficit for rate setting purposes. That can be found on page twenty five. So as you can see, the first two columns would be one general fund and one general sewer funds. So the annual surplus for rate setting purposes with the general is sixteen thousand and for water and sewer, it's twenty two, almost twenty three thousand. So overall, I would say it's a good surplus, almost bridge even. And these are meant to be brought into the twenty twenty six budget.
Have any questions for Mark?
It's not the most fun game to play. Some people enjoy it, other people don't.
Good to start finishing your presentation.
Yeah, no one has any questions. And if you do have a question later on, you can either contact me or. No, it is, the auto is, I've waited for everything smooth, you know, they were able to give me any information that I wanted to. It was, I thought it went really smooth. Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for that, believe.
Motion, okay, so the council passion, I thought you had a motion there.
So under this review, the town's twenty twenty four financial statements provided by Lay and the King, so the general operating fund, you're going to have a surplus for twenty twenty four of sixteen thousand one hundred ninety one dollars. The general operating operating fund shows a surplus of twenty two thousand one hundred seventy nine dollars. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a twenty four four audit financial statements as presented. Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded, is there any question? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. That's good. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you for having me.
So now we'll move on. We'll move on to our council reports and we will begin with our chairman of chief of.
Anything there in the council? I will say that this year's audit did go a lot smoother than last year. Last year it seemed to take a lot, so we were really glad when they actually reassign Michael to us. And Jennifer and I prepared everything that first of all, they come with lists that they just checked everything. And so Jennifer did a lot of the polling and we had it here. And Michael came here for one day and went through all of the testing and then took everything back. And within a few questions, in a couple of days, we were able to work our way through it. Had one little scare, but other than that, we managed to make our way through it. So for a surplus for twenty twenty four, which was definitely a year of challenges, kudos to everyone involved. And I'll leave it at that. As for my report, one of the things that I did put on my report is just a little information on fiscal reform. And I see that C A L Stockford actually added a copy of bill thirty three for council review. So on May seventh, we got some information from you and B about some changes that are going to hit us all in twenty twenty six. As you're all aware, I'm sure assessments will be frozen for the year twenty twenty six. But they are also introducing a spill thirty three, which is supposed to give us another. And again, I'm only going by what I've read, I haven't heard any of this information firsthand. But what it is telling us is that we will see a new funding model that will replace what traditionally has been core equalization and funding grants. So the new equalization side of it will be what they call a fiscal capacity model based, fiscal capacity based model, sorry, with communities grouped according to similar capacities to raise tax revenue and comparable levels of service. This fund will be regulated and beginning in twenty twenty seven indexed. So this fund can be used for operational or capitalist spending and it will be rolled out in four-year allocations. And then they're introducing an infrastructure fund because we, like many municipalities, have what's called an infrastructure deficit and not a whole lot of funds to work against that. So it is scheduled to begin for twenty twenty six, increase yearly and then be indexed in twenty twenty three.
Index when?
Twenty thirty, sorry. So how they're explaining this is that it's going to be similar to how our C C V F funding works. Whereby the allocations will be made twice per year and there will be infrastructure funding criteria and funding formulas that will be regulated. So more news to come on that, but that is something I thought you should all be aware of more upfront than behind the scenes. We were also contacted in early May by Luke Terrio, who is the coordinator for our C C V F of gas stash funding. And he made us aware that we could use from twenty twenty four expenses, if we had additional expenses, our top up projects. So our top projects were given to us as a one-time allocation in twenty twenty three. So we did have funds in our budgeted approved projects for the library and pavilion part that were in twenty twenty four but had been approved in twenty twenty three. So we were able to put in an additional twelve thousand. So we were able to uh, put in an additional twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And I see the funds are in our bank last week, so. That's uh, that was a gain for us that we didn't expect to see for sure. Uh, so twenty twenty six budget plans are in the works. And we will begin staff meetings uh, towards the end of June. We would like to have our May results. Uh, so we'll need the first two weeks to make sure we get our May results as close as possible. And then we'll be starting our our staff meetings then. Those are the highlights. And when I look at where we are up to the end of April. In our general operations. Currently, we're working in a surplus of a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. But if you add on the things that have to happen between now and the end of the year, because all our dependent payments. Happen in May, June, November and December. Uh, we are, and if we add in all of our budgeted. Uh, reserves that we want to be able to do this year, we are. We are in a deficit, so it is important that we continue, like I've said before. To make sure that we are repeating what we did in the first four months, at least one point eight times more. So uh, it is, we're not off the hook yet, and if we want to continue to do the savings that we were looking to do. We have got to continue to save, we have got to continue to earn at the same time. So that's the challenge that is put before us. It's not insurmountable. But it is a challenge for sure, and we saw in twenty twenty four, we rose to the challenge, so we just have to do it again. Water and sewer on the other hand is uh, trending in a surplus. May may change that a little bit because we did identify a little bit more of where those leaps are coming when we did have. A major repair that was down Main Street, but it's definitely not going to wake us up for sure. And we are going to be able to, so far, looking like we will be able to do our reserve transfers. That we so desperately need to make sure that we can, on the projects that are headed our way in twenty six and twenty seven. Cash flow looks pretty close to what it did at the end of last month. Uh, we still are carrying unrestricted cash, but we can use for day to day funding of our operations. At about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. If you have any questions, all the ten teams.
Thank you very much. Next report is with Jen Jackson, acting double director.
Get a couple of highlights. Uh, I think most of you are aware, when a woman hits the two saves, with another big thick item. Patching uh. Patching was done a little last week and a half uh, with Dexter instruction. We were flying and assisting them, but mainly through Dexter. Uh, they did spread five and a half loads of asphalt. Uh, with some more to come, we had. That week and a half is very fast week and we paved the road in the middle of the block over just a second. And uh, we weren't sure where we were exactly, so they came back at the tickets and we have one load left to finish up with. But then for our main grades. That will put us at a budget, uh, or at a cost, sorry, of thirty three thousand. With full patch last season costing somewhere around fifty five. So probably roughly the vicinity of eleven to five left. We work with us going down with our drop, picking up the loads. And asphalt's much deeper that way. So we'll hopefully have no problem if I were to charge streets this year.
When do you plan to expose it to weather related best?
Whether crew and other obstacles related.
If it all comes together, whether you'd like to start?
I'm hoping to start that in June. Along with the patching Dexter, as I mentioned, uh, paved the road. We paved the upper portion of Hillcrest, which is from the Plain Avenue to Cart Street.
Uh, that's about two hundred yards, eh? Long enough, oh, it would be a good five wood for me, and it's two hundred yards. And it cost sixty eight thousand dollars.
That was million paving, yes.
Oh, Christmas.
We did make the road better. It is thicker than once was. So it should last us, take some mind.
I hope so.
Uh, water and sewer, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna keep the Dylan report and uh, that's gonna be a. An ongoing thing for summer, uh, as you can see, uh, we did get the. The quick version or the, the uh. The report app for our winner and Belt Air approvals. Uh, but we're going to do a deeper dive, of course, into the Rockland Road mainly sewer. Uh, capacity later on this summer. So uh, that's going to be ongoing. We're waiting on a scope work and we're supposed to receive it last week and. Didn't sort of optimistically see it this week, but the scope of work with the one and five. Uh, among some other things in the works, so. On May twenty second, we had uh, water main break of sixty six Hillcrest.
That's not the leak you've been looking for.
Uh, it helped us, but it's, it's allowing me to breathe a little easier. So uh, we, we did see a, a gain of about forty thousand. So, uh, which we were, we had a loss of eighty to a hundred thousand. So we're, we're, we're not there yet, but we've, we've bettered ourselves.
But you know where it is.
No, sir.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you told me you found it.
I had some ideas, but they've so far come up dry. Yeah, uh, we did manage with the new backhoe and what I can say about these local repairs, but. Uh, with the new backhoe, we did manage to do this one in house. But uh, we did have some. Some shale things that sold us down a little bit, so it wasn't a typical fix, but we did get a fix. The very last house, as you go uphill, crash and stop sign in the plane, it's the very last house. Where we're, we're, we're working with the service line, actually.
Four crosses in the plane?
Before it crosses the plane. On the road.
Yeah, that's the old McLean head. Sorry for playing out of his name.
Streetlights, I just want to make a quick spotlight on that, but uh, they are all up and working now on my report. Yes.
Question.
Yes.
Streetlight on High Street as you turn off of Hillcrest or Orser, and here, up here by the angling church. If there's a street light that has been working for two years, are we being charged for it?
Yes.
So we're being charged for a light that hasn't worked for two years?
Apparently, yes. I was not aware of it, so I'll make a phone call to the gentleman that's up there without a company in. Food for thought. Thank you for alerting me to that. Uh, the ball field, water is the other highlight I'd like to make in animal properties. We uh, we found. The fault was damaged at some point. I don't know whether the fence or the dugout construction uh, was. Was hit and made a hole there. So with the, the direction of water now coming down through there, we had a little water. It uh, worked the water down through the hole. Uh, in fixing that, I will say, we have a little fire in the room, but uh, we. We created a drain there to help. There's been a lot of issue over the last four years of Mike line here. Ball fields having water laying on them and stuff, so this is a way to fix this problem, but also better the, the situation that we had. So I, I do hope that, I don't, not fix the problem completely, but it'll definitely help us in our problem. Staffing, I'd just like to highlight the summer students. I've been in my office three times to go through my file of resumes and my phone has rang and I've had to walk away. But tomorrow will be the day that I'll shut the phone off and be in there because I need to get these screwed tires before they run off and tell other jobs. So uh, we'll, that'll be coming in the next week and a half, probably say the time I do some interviews and, and things apart. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
That's a good question.
Okay, we'll move on to uh, our next report with Sean Reddick, Director of Facilities and Operations.
So again, uh, she hired us here in the hall. But with uh, summer registration, uh, book registration, I can help with the D N S community center. Residents ready to register for summer programs for active network live to public, um, so. Come in and kind of get first tips on some of the programs. Um, phone park is now full, so we filled up thirty spots for phone park and increased six people from last year. Um, someone in soccer, baseball programs, um, seeing positive registration as well. Swimming lesson registration will likely include if we get in the room. But it's, it's moving along, um. During registration, residents have multiple opinion options. Uh, to choose from active facility, which is something we haven't had before. And uh, we have multiple staff there to assist in accompanation with active net and answering the questions and. Kind of showcase what are some offerings going to be. Uh, positively back all around. In talking about active net, it is now live to the public and go on creating accounts, been. I was sort of a little bit, you can actually register for some of the programs. Uh, you can view online calendars for uh, the facility itself. Uh, products, uh, soccer and baseball, and we are, uh, with the help of uh. We did a, a community event calendar, so we consolidated, you can meet guys on the camera website with active net. So now there's more than one place to see what's going on in front and uh, and that's up there a lot. So as it shows here, uh, people can now perform the following, um, online. Registration, view facility and room availability, uh, we are covering programs and events and uh, virtual community room. Fitness room and pool memberships. You know, the balance from that.
Does it have a license to prompt, so like, can people sign up for like, suggestions where they want to be notified and stuff like that?
Kind of like uh. Like the original bell, right? And if you want to know when a certain program is going to be coming available, you can hit that bell and you'll get it from now. And it's great for, for um, for billing as well. One of the biggest features that sold us on active net is customers will get alerts when payments are due. So if they believe that somebody on a payment plan, let's say the phone park, uh, be two installments, so. One due before it starts and the second will be popular through season. They'll get an email saying that they have a ton of game to do and they can go online through their account. See what their balance is or what they owe for some of the programs and it's uh, it's upstream on the process. It might have been played with it last year. It's very so.
Yeah, that's what's bothering.
Western Valley Rec Association, um, recreation attended the monthly community in MacLewitt this month. To discuss the Western Valley Games Go Girls. Um, I'll get to Go Girls later, uh, a new community initiative called Fun Boxes, uh, as in the planning stage with. Uh, Western Valley Rec and I guess Service Commission. And the idea is they want to place uh. Blockable secure metal bins in various uh, areas on the valley. Mostly in like community center type areas, so that underprivileged youth and end youth. Can use uh, various sporting equipment, balls, that, that sort of thing. Um, how the, all the details of stuff haven't, we've got ironed out yet, but uh, there's more information coming on that. Um, ball hockey has begun, has been going on since April. Uh, they have added a fourth night, so now they play Sunday, Monday. Wednesday and uh, and Thursday is youth night. So uh, four nights a week for ball hockey and that will be continuing until June fourteenth. And uh, as you see more last week, it's not in the notes, but it's a bad person to report. The uh, ball hockey provincials are going to be hosted, uh, we are going to be hosting the ball hockey provincials next year. So that's uh, that's exciting as well. Um, roller skating, we are doing a roller skating demo program at the facility. We've had a couple of sessions now with the uh. The attendance is hit or miss, it really depends on weather and people have roller skates, but um.
You're doing that on the, again, on the. Right floor?
Yes.
You know, there used to be a roller skating rink in Portland. If you want to find out about it, you should ask to source Kennedy, give her a call. Because those, all the, all the skates and everything are still there in the building. And the rink is still there.
So, so that's one of the things, so first, first at a pilot program, they actually applied for funding. And got uh, funding for an actual skate program, they're, they rewarded enough finances for. Skates and, and on those lines, so the next round of funding to uh. The Western Valley that comes up, I'll, I'll, they'll try and do something along those lines with the. New program, probably will be this year, just depending on how the timeline works, because it's based on season. But uh, it is something I'm going to be looking out for and hopefully the attendance drives the uh, continued program. Uh, moving on to there, we've already gone through the summer evaluation plan, it hasn't really changed much. Other than on Canada Day, uh, we have music, the proposed bike building of. To Canada Day in the AM and that's in collaboration with the R C and P. And there'll be, they'll be coming up for Canada Day at the fall, but I want everyone to know that the bike building will be on Canada Day. Uh, the new center operation, so. Uh, as everyone is aware, um, showing you that is highly invited to the Grand Cavern, um, the gantry operation beginning on May fifth. The tunneling site is surrounding, um. For the offlands, the food and uh, walkers and both, both贩贩子们have uh, indulged quite good. And as everyone, they probably knows, the flea was accident and uh, the pricing is uh, very reasonable. Uh, we now have vending options at the facility in the lobby, there is a snack and pot machine there. Uh, pot machines is going to be filled up this week hopefully, but they have dropped off both machines. And uh, just for added convenience for our visitors. Uh, NBA Special Olympics, uh, still set to host the boxing and softball events on eighteenth and nineteenth July. And the big one recently is the uh, Western Valley Go Girls, so on uh, May twenty second. Graded girls from the neighborhood communities attending the sport and physical activity day at the D N S Community Center. Boxing community girls participate in fighting for activities led by staff involved volunteers. Huge thank you to our volunteers for running these activities and their staff and making this day successful. A lot of positive comments from the visitors, um, some local graded girls have no idea some of the stuff we have in the facility. It was kind of an eye opener for the neighborhood communities what we were able to do this in part of. The next thing here, uh, summer hours, so. Uh, C A O Stocker and I met discussing uh, use hours on evenings and weekends during the summer to reflect. Staffing changes and new program schedules and to. You know, try and uh, streamline the cost of operations and uh, and staffing. So uh, starting on June sixteenth, the plan is to have a eight AM to six PM operational hours Monday to Friday. And uh, nine AM to six PM on weekends. The reason for that, especially on weekends, it allows for one staff member to be there as opposed to two shifts. So we can staff one individual instead of two separate shifts. And then the uh, in the summers, as opposed to hiring additional rec attendants to cover the evening hours, we can use our rec attendants for fun park. And uh, streamline the, the little bit cost number, they're not the same. And then once the opposite season starts back up, hours will change back to fall. And then the next big piece of the news, I guess, is Panther Soccer in Harlem. So the D N S Community Center in Harlem will be welcoming the Western Valley Panthers to our home team roster. Uh, Justin Lin five will become their homie and Alton's will work to accommodate large weekend tournaments during our season. In addition to the Justin Lin, the Panthers will be placing a logo on the ice where the town of Harlem. In addition to the Justin Five, the Panthers will be placing a logo on the ice where the town of Hartland logo was this past season. So we'll have three home teams all bringing in uh a good amount of traffic to Hartland. Um we've already discussed the uh grand opening for the facility, um and then. The next last bit of information is uh so N B Trail usage, um. I can touch on this real quick, I attended a regional trail assessment meeting in uh this region called the North on maybe one first. In that meeting, there's definitely a lot of things, but in a nutshell, uh general trail discussion. For the region to identify path forward on including usage and condition. Uh they are conducting, and by when I say they, uh I guess they formed a uh. Committee, the Western Valley Service Commission with the province in the Brunswick, formed a initiative to assess the trail. Usage, what communities want to see out of the trail and how can make things better for everybody. And this is very closely tied into the proposal of authoritative access between um Woodstock and uh. Oh, the whole the whole region in reality, but mostly this portion here, uh. So we just fought and we submitted the application from the from our municipalities, um this exercise is being conducted to generate. You know, get feedback from the public and uh and that's. Um public surveys and information will be available in the next couple of weeks, we are going to be doing a shareable P R code. That can be sent out to uh like show share social media, social media. And um both us and this we call the North provided a strong case for the application. And uh a lot of things were considered that were never thought of before, um so we discussed creating designated walking paths. Um bio enforcement strategies, non motorized versus motorized liver crossing points, that was one of the. The big things they were concerned about was how can people cross the river both on foot and via off road vehicle and uh. He both proposed ideas for both regions, um designated motorized use through town. Uh discussion on neighboring municipalities and how this is, this is something I really appreciate is that. This isn't a new initiative for the province, it's it's a new initiative for our region, it's being done in other areas already, so it's just a matter of. Finding a path work for that and applying it to our region, ensuring the public is educated and is communicated very effectively. Um and then obviously the positive impact that this type of initiative would have on tourism and the local economy. Moving on to the last thing about staffing, are there any questions regarding uh I know it's a little bit about the N B Trail?
I just wanted to mention that um part of the meeting. That I attended on by the Service Commission was in regard to this as well, it was sort of a follow up from the visit that they had here. And they they said the the tone and mood for this. Initiative has changed greatly, where there was a lot of opposition before, there seems to be a big shift. Um toward shared trail usage, so they were very encouraged by that themselves and. That's that's a positive.
That's great, that's great news, yeah.
So, uh I'm just sort of there. What's the next step on that as far as the new information and the discussion?
Uh is it online or on a town tunnel or provincial?
Um both, the provincial may they could probably circle back to town at some point.
Right, so basically we need the final seal approval from the province. In collaboration with the commission, quad N B and municipalities like this is a goal. And uh basically, we can now use the trail in this portion. The other side of things, this is where municipalities come in, is how we incorporate that usage into bylaw, how we manage the shared trail. Designated routes, all all that kind of stuff, um how the municipalities are going to educate and communicate these things to our to our residents. And uh um maintenance, all everything along those lines, um. One of the things that they did stress was that anything outside of time limits, the H V pub. Would have to pick up the slack on that, that municipalities will are going to be focusing on the areas within their municipal plans.
So an agenda item for our next council meeting with our presentation and discussion on, yeah.
Good job, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
The last thing is just uh so much happening, so all of the. These assumptions um are going to apply and. In the recreation side of things, and then we started between uh June sixth, it's June sixth and June twenty second. Uh these positions include six lifeguards, four Fun Park coordinators. And one seasonal program coordinator, which we already have on staff. The seasonal program coordinator was awarded to us by the uh Western Dollar Rec Association. Because we are hosting the Western Valley Games this year, so every year, a hosting municipality um gets funding for a seasonal program coordinator. Any further questions?
Thank you very much, John.
Very good.
Next good stuff is Michelle Vera, uh who are fixed communications and the button.
Uh so I'll highlight a few of the things that were in my report, um under social media. Uh I just wanted to mention that the New Brunswick Health Council uh was not getting much participation in their survey about experiences. With the health healthcare system, so I did do a post on Facebook to try to encourage participation. And uh council members are also encouraged to take that survey, so I did include the link um in my report. Uh then we'll get down to the newsletter, so that newsletter, it's nearly completed, I think I just have one little article left to finish on that one. Um and my plan is to submit that to the printer mid-June for circulation the first week of July. Then for grants and funding, so. Uh very remember, I think it was back in January, that council had approved a proceeds of crime application for a radar speed sign. And we got confirmation that that was approved, so that was thirty eight hundred twenty nine dollars and fifteen cents. Which covers the full amount of the sign, including our uncoverable portion of the H S T.
Sure, we're starting to be located.
So it's movable, so the C A O will be um determining. The order and where it should be placed first, so typically they're placed in one location for a two week period, it gathers data. You download the data, send it to the R C M P. Um so that they can review it and then the sign is then moved to the next location for a two week period and so on. And so it would be giving our C M P data of um. How serious is the issue of speeding in the particular area, is it a particular time of day? Is there a certain time when they should be coming to be present um to do some, yeah, to do some monitoring?
So it could be placed outside of. The old heartland?
Absolutely, anywhere it's in the municipality.
Over on one oh five in Summer?
So the one oh three was, I think, brought up, um because there was someone who came to council uh to leave late last year. And a few months ago now, they had concerns about the one oh three, so there would be a lot of locations, uh it'll be. Portable, we've got to get trained on it, um Julie's determining who needs to do that, so. Um yes, and so it's been ordered, it's going to be a couple of weeks, I think, before it'll be here, but we'll get moving on that. Um the. The Community Investment Fund, uh council had approved the twenty thousand dollar beautification application. Where we asked for fifteen thousand dollars, uh and it got approved for ten thousand dollars, so it's still good, we're still be able to um. Turn some money that we already had budgeted and, you know, make it go a little further, so that's good news. The preconstruction and infrastructure grant application number three, so this is. Phase two of Rockland Road, um phase one, you remember that that scaled back. Um at the request of R D C and they want us to include everything in the second application, so. We met with Dylan Consulting and he is working on a draft spoke of work and cost estimate. That we would be able to um have another discussion with R D C who manages the chief program as well. So it will be for everything and R D C wants it to include the actual construction and infrastructure and. Everything is what their wishes instead of just going with the uh preconstruction portion. So we'll have a lot better idea before too long, I think, of what that could look like. Um and then if we have to, um the C A O would be able to make some decisions on whether we have to remove some things just based on. What it's going to cost and what we can afford to do. So we'll continue to work on that, um the Farm Credit Canada application. Ten thousand dollars of funding towards the Pavilion Park project that was requested and we just received word that that was not approved. Um so we still have uh our application again to R D C that we had requested some funding for that as well. So um we're waiting and seeing, so it's not that nothing can happen, that was just ten thousand of the money that we were. Hoping for, so that won't, that part of it won't happen. Uh for the downtown waterfront revitalization project, the N B Power Wawa consent letter, so we bought that. Um and N B Power provided their terms and conditions um that Julie reviewed and. Agreed to, so we have that, that's been forwarded to the Glenn Group. Um so that they can submit it with our Wawa application, so we are just waiting at this point. Uh and the the folks at the Wawa department, they have been in touch with the Glenn Group and they're asking questions. So they know that our application is being reviewed, so it is moving forward at least. Under planning and development, we have three building and development permits um issued in the month of April totaling one million two hundred twenty five thousand five hundred dollars. And that was residential and industrial construction value, so our year to date total, we haven't had a lot before this. Uh but our year to date total is one million four hundred seventy five thousand five hundred in construction value. And keep in mind, that doesn't always translate dollar to dollar into assessed value, but. When a construction is done, whether it's renovating, that is going to be reflected, even though there's an assessment freeze. That that is one of the things, it will be taken into account if there's been a renovation.
Wouldn't it be fair to ask what, who those permits were given to?
Um no, I don't believe that's public record.
Okay.
Um and plus, I don't have the information off the top of my head, but I don't believe property ownership, we typically can only give the P I Ts. Is what I was told in the training. Uh so then the next one is, um. The Regional Service Commission confirmed that they've received all of the information. For the rezoning of the property in front of the Hartland Community School, so that one um. Our uh Development Director of the. Development with the Service Commission is uh Development Officer, there we go. Is uh going to be reviewing everything he's done up a tentative schedule of the rezoning. And so um if all goes according to plan, that'll start at the next council meeting, Connor will be presenting that to council. And then if it all goes according to plan, the final reading would be at the July twenty second meeting. I did notice my notes there said that it's a sixty four unit building, but it's only it's only, uh it's actually sixty two, not sixty four, I know it's up today. Um then, um good news, we've been seeing that our tourism and seasonal operators have been announcing their opening dates. Um but I believe they're pretty much all up and running now, we've got the Hartland Golf and Country Club open April twenty fourth. C K's Canteen, May ninth, twelve eighty two canteen, uh May fifteenth, Heartland Visitors Center opened last week. Uh the Cover Bridge Restaurant and Bar, which is at the golf club, that opened May twentieth. And the Heartland Farmers Market starts on Saturday, Jan seventh, so everything is getting underway for the summer. Were there any questions with any items I mentioned or other things that were in my report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm in seven five, this is our fire report, I put in here and fire chief Roy Reed.
What's that? Neither of you, buddy? Too bad, she's a lady?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Uh been wait for both uh well since uh people at the town have been paying a lot of these fires I haven't been to. But uh I just want to tell all the counselors, like two months ago, away, I had no problem at all with the. The department and the officers, they did a real good job. And like you look down there, there was one time, the April the the twentieth, they had three in one day. And after, then I get a little note from the fellow, he said. We do two at a time, and we answered, I don't know what your problem is, and I can do it, so. And I thought he said that I had a problem, I said something, but I didn't, he said, no, just give me. And I think there was a couple of times, they had two in one day.
Has somebody got a problem with hydrophones?
Well, this is what uh. This is when the the wind, like that twentieth, it was a windy weekend and they went to a structural fire at first. Down in Wake Hill and then uh out to Howard Gork and then one oh four. That same day, the wind blew the the trees on the power line. And one time it blew the the pole, really off the mast of the house there, like it started a fire, so they had to go to them. So and like in the springtime, it's usually quite busy with grass fires and like this, so. And they did a real good job, I know that the numbers are up, but that's what uh we have to do, it's like so. In the book, our new fire by law that we spent a couple of some months of time finding out. Do any of these grass fires, forest fires, who did they fly for permits to do this, or are they getting the letter? Stating that, or is it legal to have a grass fire, just so we're all clear? Um the ones with the grass fires here, I wasn't eager to want to examine them.
Questions left for you, Roy, it's just for our passengers.
Okay, so it's it's it's, but you guys are putting them out, but that's your goal, we appreciate that, yeah. I'm just saying, we spent a lot of time on trying to maybe manage and. Understand what's allowed, what's not allowed in our community, and it just seems to be. Unnecessary resource to have your team possibly go up, hopefully spend some time in the spring. To fight the fire that maybe isn't supposed to be happening anyway, and I'm just asking the question of if it's something that. You know, if this happens, should they get a letter from the town saying, did you know our protocol that maybe prohibit this? Just about.
I, to be honest, I haven't gone through this in that much detail yet, but I will go through and address it with the fire by law and see if.
And just to see if there's a.
Yeah, well, but how easily is it uh down to find out if they have any requests for fire permits? Um.
We uh, sorry, we've had the, I want to say six in the volume move. Uh permits, uh that's awarded, uh and uh. The two grass fires that I can think of, sort of, but I don't mean the stuff where I was there. Uh two were incidental, uh. You know, somebody going along throwing their cigarette.
That's not like that, yeah.
One may have done something that we couldn't prove by their logs, and so, you know, we're all good about that. Same, so uh you know, it would be very hard to police those ones, but uh there. We also, yesterday I had a call, it's more than that, the port, we had a call that. There's smoke in the area and it was someone that did not have a permit, so they were instructed that uh, you know. Next time you already have a permit, this is what we need to do. Yeah, that kind of thing, so there is some education being put out there to to help that.
I mean, that's all such, yeah, because a lot of people call, and Jennifer, and then she contacted me when I was out. Doing the theory, there's a gender, sign it off, and then when they do, they're gonna have a little burner thing. We usually call four, five, nine and say there's a control burn, this stuff and such a day, so they won't dispatch us, so.
So that process is working well?
Oh yeah, it is working good, except for what you say, like the other day, I wasn't around at the time. And the guy smelled smoke in the house and everything like that, and then it was burning in the camp, somebody burned it, brushing the camp, yeah. And he wasn't, he asked for the burn permit, burn permit at all. So, and I don't know, somebody went, okay, I suppose, okay, so I think that. Thank you, okay.
Thank you very much. And then we'll look to our C A O with with stuff like, with the evening everyone, um. Just call it some highlights, I don't know what everybody's already talked about. Uh, we have officially been told that the bridge is supposed to open by the end of the third week of June, so we're hoping that's the case. Uh, we have received support, uh, from M L A Bill Hogan's office on both the opening of the bridge, because it affects the town's economy, and our paving project for Route one oh five. Uh, just want to point out that the twenty-twenty-five P M H P wrote ahead plans advised today uh, is out and ended that. Besides some paving in our area, it, uh, our Hugh John Fleming Bridge falls under the bridge project. And looks like it is, uh, scheduled for a full removal and reconstruction starting in twenty-twenty-seven. More needs to come, I'm sure.
Uh. Is there any way you can get more information on that? I mean, what are they gonna do, take that whole bridge out of there?
I will try. Today is, it just came across our desk today, so I redid the report to include it, so I. I'm, yeah, it, uh, according to the report we received, it's, it's to be completely.
I'd like, why? I mean, is there something wrong with the grid?
We'll see what we can find out.
The arches aren't. I could say something else, but I.
Under community events and engagement, uh, there's an autism walk at the complex on June twenty-first. So I've actually sent out, it's a Saturday, so I've sent out, uh, I'm encouraging the team, the town team, to participate in that as a group possibly and show some support for autism. Uh, I have been in contact with the R C M P. We're getting our bike rodeo. And I've let them know our major schedule of events, our bigger events, they're going on this summer and ask for representation or them to at least be available to be seen in town for something. Uh, that was covered. We had our strategic plan review over the weekend, so good news here seem to be on target, so there's some more updated information. I'll send that out along with our council package. Um, I have no, well, Treasurer Pelkey and I have noticed, and Director Dara, um, we've been working with A Network and Chris, which is the Climate. Remember, the Resiliency Infrastructure Service. Uh, and it's targeted for small municipalities like ours to help us get our planning and everything updated, because it looks like the government's shifting gears from housing to climate funding. So we want to make sure we have everything in order so that we can, because our will to update or move, depending on what council decides, and our infrastructure underground behind the Baptist Church all qualify under this because of the rising water and climate change. Um, I had a meeting with Josh Corey, the Regional Director for E M O, um, Regional Coordinator, and he, we reviewed our emergency measure plans that Director Magro had worked on for us up until that point. And he was pleased with our progress and felt we were ahead of a few municipalities, so he, um, just pointed out some things and is willing to work with us further to get that, um, up to date and everything done on that. I participated in our Earth Day cleanup and reso, and helped pick up some garbage around Pavilion Park for the town. To highlight and spin off some more on the N B Trail update that John provided. Um, we are going to have a presentation in our next council meeting just to address what he highlighted in his report. Um, we need to find out and clarify with the province what we have to do for a bylaw as far as directing the T Vs on to, off of the trail and onto the road, and maybe map out a, a way for them to travel. Uh, also, there was, I believe, Councillor Walton and Councillor Patterson had brought up issues regarding dirt bikes and A T Vs on the roads at previous meetings. So we do have a little blurb that we wanted to put in the newsletter, uh, keeping in mind that we do intend to work on a bylaw and making changes with A T Vs using roads in town and supporting our tourists. So I have included in my package just the little blurb that we're going to put in the newsletter. Um, it just highlights that they have to be legal, they're technically not supposed to be on the road at this point, uh, and numbers to call. We didn't really want to go into too much detail, because we don't want to, um, start a fight maybe that we have to do on with the, the A T Vs and, and things.
Oh, my, I couldn't have taught today.
We'll be after you. Bylaw and public safety, um, there's, I've got a list there of bylaw issues or complaints or concerns that I've handled just since our last, our last regular meeting. Um, the dog ones I've handled myself, sent out letters. Um, there are some unsightly there that we will have to address in our next council meeting and decide what we're doing or which way we're going there. Um.
Do you have an estimate on the costs associated with removing unsightly premises?
To demolish, we figured ten thousand minimum, I think, is what we kind of tossed around.
I saw we talked about that on Saturday.
Kind of a little. We did, it was that we need a budget. I think apparently we have very.
That's cost is for one.
Yes. Yeah, so.
That's something that we discussed and reviewing in contact with that.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Oh, did to do. I mean, with regards to the Dan Ross Complex, I am in the process of reviewing the reports, the final reports from that and the testing and commissioning reports. Um, especially with regards to the sprinkler, I just want to see if there's any bold recourse there to help us out with our water supply issue.
Have you heard anything back from Jonathan Dickinson? I'm trying to.
It's kind of, yes, I haven't, but it's, yeah, it's on the agenda. And I guess I participated in media training with the mayor on April twenty-fifth. It's very interesting. Um, did a paving and management webinar, webinar on the twenty-third, and Tina and I were in on the A Network webinar, which has got us the information for. Thank you. Any questions for C A O?
Well, we've wanted that your teacher, I guess, a little bit, so.
Thanks for coming to work every day.
I saved your message, by the way, from my birthday today, so I haven't had that. Okay, that takes care of our council reports. Uh, we will now move on to item nine. Uh, and this is in regard to the resident complaint regarding this cannabis smell from the neighboring property.
So I've had. Let me keep it so this. I have sent an email out, um, to council and there was a little back and forth there, but I guess I'm just, I'm not sure where or what county wants to do with this. Um, if you want me to do some more investigating and see if other municipalities have a cannabis bylaw. My concern is when we are addressing smells from a neighboring property for something that is not against the law or setting precedents, and at what point do we draw the line if a neighbor complains because somebody has a pool and the chlorine smells too strong, or they have a barbecue and they don't like the smell of it?
So we've currently found no violations as far as.
There's nothing on our end. If anything's, the only thing he can do is contact the R C M P if he feels he's breaking the law, but it's not the municipality's responsibility to enforce the, those types of laws. And we don't have a bylaw. I did review our nuisance bylaw from nineteen seventy-six or seventy-nine. It's a little outdated, but there's nothing in there with regards to.
The update, C M P.
Right.
To investigate to see if they're, is it locked?
Yeah.
Enclosed property, yeah.
They're abiding by. But again, that's, if that's a complaint from the neighbor, then the neighbor should contact the R C M P.
But that might be logical step in this case and.
Yeah.
But it's.
And that.
If it's simply odor, if it's simply odor.
Yes.
Have you been in contact with the resident?
I called, I called and left a message. I wasn't able to go directly and just said that, you know, we would have to be checked.
So under the provincial guidelines, there's no range, if you, you know, if your, if your property's, like, I can't put a ladder on my neighbor's property to clean their eggs, I mean, because it's going to be six feet or.
Yeah, there's a proximity rule. There's an encasement rule and a proximity rule. Um, and those have to be avoided, but those are enforced by the federal agencies there simply. Not, so this particular case.
I, I contacted, uh, Connor at the Regional Service Commission and asked if there was anything under the planning or zoning or anything, and there was nothing that he was aware of that.
So according to, uh, Councillor Walton was here that evening and was, uh, reciting some of the restrictions and guidelines. And it, it is, that's, it's R C M P.
It's a law in law which is enforceable or, or if, yeah, it's enforceable by the county not municipal, because we have known. And again, how do you address now a bylaw unless it's like a factory or somebody that's breaking environmental liability laws? It's, it's really hard to.
I mean, if that's, that's the issue at the end is the odor, and I mean, somebody, somebody might say they don't like the smell of roses.
Exactly, that's.
It, it, it is, it's a lifestyle change within our society and it's something of that nature. If everything is being done accordingly to the law written by the federal government, I think you guys have enough on your plate that, that's where we stop and end.
I agree. If we can, you check the R C M P, if you feel that there's a violation.
An encroachment or something of that nature or.
That's what I had mentioned, that, you know, really.
You have heard from Jonathan, that, did he address the problems with his neighbor?
I haven't heard back from him. I, I called and left a message. He didn't answer the call, but I asked him if he, you know, said, "We have any questions to call?" I mean. So I guess my question is just where you want me to go from here, whether just.
Thank you, done your part and do bill just as far as concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're going down. All right.
I guess my follow-up question to that would be, since you reviewed those other bylaws, you've, you give up, there needs to be an update on those as well.
Definitely think our nuisance bylaw needs another update. That's on my, yes. Yeah.
So, yes, thank you for, uh, looking into that. We'll just move on from there.
Right.
Okay, so new business, uh, item ten-one is near the investment fund, uh, for community events and festival application.
It's me. Um, actually, the cell done, the lady was in the footwork on this, um, she identified with the funding, and we discussed and decided that we would have our volunteer and fireman and employee recognition during the municipality.
I think it's the remote work.
For in September.
It's the new business ten-one.
Yeah.
We have the events and, oh, no, my number one.
No, I think.
Nope, the town only, for voluntary recognition, yeah. So, um, there's levels, I believe there was three levels, and we would qualify in the mid-level, which the cost is between three thousand and one to seven thousand dollars. So with our tentative plan, um, we qualify for a thousand dollars of assistance, so, um, our total budget looks like it was around five thousand dollars, so just looking for approval to submit the application. So we can continue and move forward with our planning for that event.
Please prepare motion there.
I'd like to make a mention of, for the community investment fund application for the community events and festival initiative, one thousand dollars to go toward the five thousand dollar volunteer recognition event.
Second, yeah?
Seconded.
Let's just then move to the second bit. One question on that motion. Here now, I'll go to favor, raise your right hand. Motion is to insert my confusion.
Yeah.
I understand you. Item two is a community anniversaries grant. From the, from Michelle, then that.
All right. So another event, it kind of sounds like the, the previous one, but that previous one was a provincial grant. Uh, this one, the community anniversaries grant is a federal grant. Um, it would, it's through the Building Communities Through Arts and Heritage Funding Stream for an event that would take place in August of next year. Uh, the deadline for submission is actually the end of this month, so even though it sounds like we're applying really early, we're up against the deadline here on this one. Uh, so the next year will mark the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Heartland Covered Bridge. Um, it opened in nineteen oh one as an uncovered bridge, which was mentioned, uh, by George Kennedy earlier. Um, this application would include a piece of public art, some historic interpretive signage, decorations, children's activities, um, volunteer clothing, live music and equipment rentals. So a lot of the things, we're trying to tie it to, it, it's, it's an arts and heritage grant, so we're trying to tie it with arts. Um, and celebrating our heritage at the same time. So this, this event, um, would coincide with Big Bridge Fest and Heartland Culture on the Green, which is a perfect combination with the artists being here. Um, and it'd be great to be able to have a piece of public art unveiled at that event. Uh, so the total project would be eighty-six thousand two hundred dollars, and the application would request fifty-two thousand nine hundred uh, from the community anniver, uh, community anniversaries, the, the federal program. And then if our application is approved, we would be able to apply to R D C, um, to contribute. It looks like sixteen thousand four hundred should be eligible through that provincial, um, portion. So that's for the infrastructure things like the piece of public art and the interpretive, uh, signs, the historic signs. Uh, so there is, I have included a motion there if council would like me to move forward with that application.
Like to make a motion for the federal community anniversary grant application for eighty-six thousand, general, our project, the rest of fifty-three thousand, line it all in his funding.
Seconded that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Here now, I'll go to favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried, and I've just been, um, notified that the last motion, ten-three, um, should not be there, so we will just move on from that, whatever we can ask. Yeah. We want to do anything more than one.
I didn't have it prepared. It's not on the agenda. It's in the next slide. It's on the next one.
Okay. So the date of our next meeting, so June second, it's thirty, June twenty-fourth, also that's fifth thirty. Is there any other business for thinking? Here in, but interesting, welcome to adjourn.
Welcome to adjourn, Dr. Rip.
We have a second here, please.
Second.
And thirty. Uh, I'll go to favor, raise your right hand. You, uh, adjourn. My assistant ends. Thank you, gentlemen, anyone?